To start as close to time, if not on time. So I would like to call this meeting to order. Today, Tuesday, May twenty first, twenty twenty four at seven P M. And as we have the other council member join us, we'll go ahead and add them, okay? Valerie Woodall?
I'm here.
Danielle?
Here.
So Luke and Jared have not jumped in, so Valerie, you being the senior member, I'm gonna ask you to read the agenda, okay?
Sounds good. Um, okay, yes, um, the agenda for the work session of the mayor and city council. Um, number one, um, call to order, um, number two, review of the agenda, five minutes. The mayor and council will review the agenda for the meeting, adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. Number three, presentation and discussion on building application for five, four, five, oh, five, thirty second street, Mount Rainier, Maryland, ten minutes. Uh, the mayor and council will have a discussion about the reference building application regarding four, five, oh, five, thirty second street in Mount Rainier. Number four, uh, discussion on the role in the, of the police review and advisory board, twenty minutes. The mayor and council will have a discussion on the role of the police review and advisory board. Um, number five, presentation and discussion on having drug-free school, uh, I'm sorry, drug-free zones designation to certain areas of the city, twenty minutes. The mayor and council will discuss a proposal from, uh, council member Danielle Carter to designate certain areas of the city as drug, drug-free zones. Number six, presentation and discussion on the Womata Metro, uh, better bus network update and Mount Rainier feedback, twenty minutes. Council member Jared Stolffus will provide a summary on Womata's just released bus network redesign and provide suggestions for Mount Rainier's feedback. So the water, Womata Board and Leadership. Uh, number seven, uh, presentation of minutes, five minutes, the city clerk will present the following minutes to the mayor and council. April sixteenth, twenty twenty four, work session, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, budget legislative meeting, and May seventh, twenty twenty four, legislative meeting. And number eight, adjournment.
Thank you so much, Valerie, please take into account, uh, Council Jared has joined us as well. Jared, you just dug that of reading the whole agenda, so Valerie, you did outstanding, thank you so much. All right, moving on, so is there anything, anything you guys wanna take out of this agenda? That is not for the work of the order? Okay, hearing none, we move on to presentation, discussion, and building application for forty-five, oh, five, thirty-second street, Mount Rainier, Maryland. The mayor council here, discussion about the ref, reference building application regarding forty-five, oh, five, thirty-second street in Mount Rainier. And I see Director Farofino here with us, hello Alma, thank you for joining us in your thousand meeting with us. Um, give us a little bit of feedback and, and is the resident here with us?
Good evening, mayor and council, um, we are here, as you said, once more, um, today to have a presentation, um, on property for fo- forty-five, oh, five, thirty-second street. Um, I know we have Mister Tom Campos here to actually do the, the small presentation. Um, if you have any questions, um, definitely let me know, Mister Campos?
All right, thank you so much, Alma, Mister Campos, thank you for joining us today. Um, I don't see him here, Alma. I don't see Mister Campos here, Alma, and please, um, note that Luke Cheswick has arrived as well. Thank you, Councilmember Cheswick. So Alma, the residents that are here, can you put us through a walkthrough of what it is that, um, the changes are, or do you want us to move on?
No, I can definitely, uh, give a little overview, um, on the, um, building permit. I know he submitted, um, two different permits to DPI. Um, one is for interior renovation, which, um, the department actually, um, allowed him to do, um, while he was waiting for the presentation. Um, so for the second, um, you know, uh, DPI permit that he got approved for, it's a, um, one-story addition that he's gonna be doing to his property. Um, not exactly sure what the little, um, intakes are to it. Um, what I can do is I can definitely try to, uh, get in touch with him and, um, see if he's coming on or, or what's happening with him.
Can you do me a favor, Alma, I'm gonna table this until further, so we'll move in, as soon as he comes in, can you like alert us that he's here? And I'll make him the next item?
Sure thing, ma'am.
Will that work? Yeah, can you reach out and make sure that, um, they have the proper link and information, um, just in case so that they could, um, they could join, okay?
Okay, yes, no problem, thank you.
All right, perfect, thank you so much, Alma, so council, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause number three. And the minute, uh, the resident joins, we're gonna put a pause to the, um, we're gonna like incorporate it back into the agenda, all right? And Luke, you looked out as well, Valerie did a wonderful job reading the agenda, okay? So you and Jared locked out, but Valerie was ready. Okay, all right, moving on to number four, discussion on the role of the police review and advisory board. The mayor and council will discuss on the role of the police review and advisory board. Jared, I'm gonna pass this one to you, cuz you are the liaison to give us any feedback, cuz I did not per sixty any documents in the package. So give us a little bit of guidance on, I know we had discussed about then coming to them. Then come, how do you call it, to them, for us to have this discussion, as mayor and council have a little bit more clarity, but go ahead.
Yeah, so we'd, we'd, um, can you all hear me? Okay, yeah, so we'd put this, um, put this item on the agenda just to clarify, I think, what's been a, um, a kind of unclear definition of this, uh, particular committee, so I'm, I'm gonna very briefly just talk about a little bit of the history for any folks watching. Um, in, and actually, Selena, Luke, you might, you guys were actually here for the first iteration of this, I was not on council till twenty, May twenty-one, but, you know, in twenty twenty, obviously, there was a lot of, um, a lot of things happening nationally around, uh, policing, um, really sparked by the, um, the moment with, uh, you know, George Floyd, and it, it started a, a lot of conversations both nationally and locally about, uh, sort of engagement with police, uh, broader discussions around police reform and so on. Uh, and the council in, uh, in ordinance, um, eight, uh, twenty, uh, ordinance zero eight dash twenty twenty, um, had passed a proposal to basically establish a police, uh, review and advisory board, and this would basically be a, uh, committee that kind of directly addressed, uh, and reviewed, uh, cases and, um, and, and issues with the police. Um, now, after that was passed, and sorry, Selena, that, or Luke, if you guys need to jut in here if I'm getting something off, but, um, i- in the middle of that, the state basically had, uh, passed a law establishing, um, basically county-level, uh, advisory boards, and the county-level advisory boards actually basically took the role that, took, basically took the role of, uh, the advisory review engagement, you know, um, citizen review and accountability, and basically took what might have been something the city has done and basically allocated the county, in fact, prohibiting basically the city from doing those things itself, so, you know, fantastic idea, and especially if we, you know, a lot of times the city kind of steps forward with the state or other municipalities or not. In this case, you know, the idea that we had, which was an important one, especially reflective of the environment at that time, uh, basically got superseded by the fact the county, uh, sorry, the state basically had set something in place that established this role at the county, and that, you know, took precedence over whether, you know, most of the counties obviously unincorporated, uh, there's no, you know, direct, there's direct engagement. Uh, the direct engagement is since Prince George County, um, um, Police Department, but it also basically took the role that might have been in the, um, at the municipal level. Um, so, you know, at the, at the time, the council had basically everything that the police advisory board had originally contemplated basically is being done at the county level, and actually, the city is prohibited from doing those same things. So what it kind of did was created a little bit of a orphan, if you will, in terms of this, uh, advisory board in terms of the roles that it had, so there were, when we had revised the, um, when we had revised the, uh, the police advisory board, uh, duties and, and basically shrunk them down considerably because of the conflict with what the state, um, state had, there was three duties that we laid out specifically. One, the board will review annually the policies, rules, regulations, and practices for the police department with respect to whether they foster the fair, courteous, equitable, respectful treatment of members of the public. B, the board and the city manager shall review the department's budget before it is submitted to city council. C, the board shall make annual reports to the city council's activities during the previous year, and so that was basically the bounds, um, of that. What, what I don't believe that mayor and council probably had done a clear enough job was kind of reiterating like what we saw that role as and, um, you know, how we expected those, those three things, if you will, to, um, uh, be carried out, when basically, yeah, three things, reviewing policies, regs, and regulations, right? Uh, reviewing the department's budget before it's submitted to the city council, it's on an annual basis, and an annual report. Um, so that's, I think, what we just kind of need to clarify. I, I know there's, there's some interest in the, um, you know, some interest in the board having a broader, sort of broader latitude than it does. Um, you know, that's probably a separate discussion, I don't know that we've, we, we've, we've, we needed to fi- we need to better, better define the role, the limited roles that we've set. Um, I think before we, you know, just have a separate discussion on the, um, you know, more broadened purview, which, you know, I certainly fe- feel that there's probably some value in activities, I'm not personally, um, sure that they fall under the purview and the reason that we originally established the committee for, so, um, with that, I'm gonna pause real quick cuz I've been talking for quite a bit, and, uh, Selena, I'll let you go ahead.
So thank you, Jared, for that follow, um, through. I would say that the only thing I wanna make sure to make clear on that thing that you said, it was like the resolution done in twenty twenty never was voted and approved by mayor and council because we knew that, um, it was being discussed in the state. So we knew for a fact that even if we were to pass it, it would like, um, by the time we recruit members, it would have, um, already expired, right? So wisely, uh, mayor and council at the time decided that, uh, we were gonna put a hold and wait for what the state law was before we went ahead and like edit the draft that we put together. In order to still move forward, we created with the limitations that we had, so I wanna make sure that that's, um, accurate. Luke, is there anything else you wanna add that I missed on the reason why it was established, or anything that me or Jared missed on the history that might be important, cuz I know you were there as well?
No, I think you guys did a really good job of summing it up. Um, and I really appreciate it because I know at the last conversation with the police advisory board, a lot of these questions came up. Um, and I just appreciate the recap, um, cuz I think there's a lot of confusion as to role and, and, and I think this recap of kind of the original purpose is, is very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think also limitations we have, um, as a city. The other thing is that we wanna make sure that the police advisory board does not overstep in the roles of the police department. Their job is very much like, or the city, when it comes to outreach to the community, I know they have several, and we have Chief Olson here, they have several events that they, uh, they do community outreach. Um, both in event-wise, but also when it comes to, um, when it comes to like, you know, coffee with the cop, you know, but there's a list of, how many events do you guys hold a year, chief, um, a good what? Ten events? I mean, you guys hold one of the biggest events in the city, aside from Mount Rainier Day, I mean, it's a lot of events.
Maybe a half dozen, mayor.
Yeah, so somewhere on those lines, along with like, I think I said, uh, twice a year, three times a year, the co- uh, Coffee with the Cop, where residents could come over and talk to you guys and discuss whatever they need to discuss.
Yes, and if we add those, that's, that's quarterly, so that's four in itself.
Okay.
So in addition to the other, so you're right, close to ten or more.
Yeah, so I wanna make sure that's also addressed because the, um, the illusion also of, um, PD not, um, having outreach events for the community is also not, not fully accurate. They do have events, the Coffee with the Cop is, you know, heavily also advertising opportunity for people to come and enjoy a coffee, talk to the officers, but also they are very ridiculously approachable, so people have concerns, they could talk to them and address different issues, right? Because I think that's one of the things that was being discussed on what the role of the city, the police advisory board and PD is, so wanna make sure that, you know, that we keep those separately in, in order to make sure that we're not, um, overstep between one and the other. All right, so Jared, I'm gonna send this back to you, and I need you to tell me what exactly do you wanna see the goal for, for today to be, cuz you already talked about the three points, right? Are we thinking more of like fine-tuning it in the sense of like, the committee needs, so let's say for the budget, the committee needs to meet with the city manager be, between submitting proposals on December, whatever it is, any recommendations? Cuz the way it works is like PD submits something to the city manager and they could review it, right? And they could just made recommendations to the city manager, they don't make recommendations on the budget to us, um. You know, the first step from any committee, no matter what it is, um, is go to the city manager after department heads have like submitted, and then, how do you call it, um? And then he incorporates it within the budget, depending on the limitations we might have and the things that we can do. So is that more or less like the guidance we're looking into to make sure that those rules are fine-tuned, or, or what does it looks like, cuz, um, at least, um, the common understanding was that they'll meet, uh, you know, somewhere around four times a year, it wasn't gonna be a lot of meetings, and I'm hearing they're like meeting, um, a lot, but the other thing that we're gonna work with all the committees as well, we, aside from all the papers they need to turn in, it's like they need to follow open meetings rules, just like everybody else, so agendas cannot be flying in like, you know, the night before or the day of the meeting, um, if not, like the city manager has every power to say the meeting will be postponed because of lack of like notice to the community. And same thing goes for staff, um, staff, just like any other committee, needs to be, um, requested to our city manager. Um, you know, nobody else has access to staff unless it's cleared through the city manager because it is his, um, it is their stuff, so I need to make sure on it. So I would say that if any agenda comes in last minute, um, less than twenty-four hours, so you need to give the city staff at least like seventy-two hours to make sure that they could create the links and put it out, it definitely will be more useful as well, so things like, is that what you're more or less thinking of, Jared? I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I did wanna, um, and I did wanna clarify on the open meeting stuff, um, you know, earlier, I know historically, a lot of our committees have, I would say not been out of compliance necessarily on purpose, but just because of, uh, lack of background and, and historically, we're, as you know, we've been doing a great job of getting our city committees in line with, um, act, you know, state law and so forth and so forth, so I, I did wanna clarify that, you know, they have been following, uh, public meetings, um, they have attended the open meetings training, uh, online. So I did, um, I just did wanna clarify that's, that's been a, um, that is, that, that piece of sufficient notice establishment of agenda and so forth has been, um, has been, has been done, uh, as recently, so, um, I think, you know, there's kind of going back to the, uh, the duties in section four, three, oh, two, I'm, I'm reading from the, um, um, from the ordinance that established the committee as it stands right now. Uh, you know, there's reviewing annually the policies, regulations, uh, and practices for the police department, um, and, um, so actually, let me go to the second one first, the board and the city manager shall review the apartment's budget before it is, uh, submitted to the city council. I think maybe it might be, it might be helpful, you know, we have a budget process, right? Um, we have a, with a calendar, we establish that every year we pass and agree to what the schedule is, I think, um, you know, if we create a, just for clarity, cuz I, I, I think this is what we probably didn't do clear enough, is kind of establish when the committee reports into the city manager, right, sorry, when do the committee engages in, in the, um, you know, in the budget process, so, uh, you know, I think we establish some clear points, you know, clear and limited points during the budget process, this is where the committee reviews the budget process, this is where they provide feedback. Um, you know, and this is where, within the, the budget cycle, it's not a continuous process, it's not ongoing, it's, you know, it's a singles or, you know, limited step feed-in point during the budget process, yeah.
So I was gonna say that King, I mean, can you like, I think that's a big good point for us to narrow it down, and I think that this is where, um, we would need more guidance for the city manager, so that way goes in tune where, you know, usually the staff turns it at a certain point, right? And then they might have like thirty days before it gets to us or something like that, so during those thirty days, they need to meet with the city manager before he puts in a document submitted to us, right? So that might be where the city manager and the clerk will be able to give us, and the finance director or finance team will be able to give us a little bit more guidance on what the turnaround looks like, to make sure that it gives them enough time to have an input, but at the same time, it gives the city manager enough time to not delay with the budget, um, with the budget process. The other part I was gonna ask you, regarding the rules and regulation, I think that definitely we need to like maybe set some margins on it, um, because at least I have not seen any information be brought up to us when it comes to any suggestions on like, on any rules and regulations when it comes to PD. So if that's not happening, how do you call it, uh, is there something that we still wanna keep there? Or, or not, or leave it temporarily, that's something like we could put a pause and also discuss as a team, right? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, there's, it, it's in the ordinance, I, I don't think, again, we've.
Jared, you muted yourself.
Jared, sorry, sorry, sorry about that, sorry about that. Um, I, I, I said, it is in the ordinance that it happens on a annual basis, um. You know, I think we, we establish a time where the PRB reviews, you know, again, in a, you know, in a defined schedule, the PRAB reviews city procedures, or sorry, the city regulations, et cetera, so forth. I mean, I, I think my question to chief or maybe one of you all that has, that's been on council a bit longer is, you know, obviously procedures don't necessarily change constantly, right? Uh, you know, we have well-established procedures and policies and, you know, so maybe it's, you know, there's a review period, you know, once annually, and then when there's a major policy change, I guess, you know, I think, I, I think maybe there's, you know, maybe some reason to do it in a cadence, you know, that reflects an actual need because of a major policy shift, but I don't think there's a, I, I don't think there's a need to continuously uh, engage and review every, you know, every single month, I mean, if we did that across the board for all city procedures and policies, I mean, we'd grind, we'd grind the city to a halt, so I wanna be mindful of the city staff's time, Chief Olson's time, um, Mister Kamali's time on like how we kind of have this like citizen feedback piece in a way that adds value and is, um, iterative in a way that makes sense.
Okay, so I'm gonna open up to the council regarding like changes to, well, they advise, that's all they can do to us, advise it and send it to the city manager and city manager to us, right? So I wanna make sure we're clear with that, the other thing is like, we might have to, um, Mister Kamali will have to work with the team because depending if it's like a suggestion to, um, I think PD that might be tied up with code, Munich code is very specific when, uh, things are submitted. So I know Mister Campos is here, so we're gonna wrap up this conversation, and then we're gonna ask him to like join us, okay? So he'll be the next item that we table, okay? All right, so council, um, Jared, to me, I'll leave it up to council, but it sounds like we still might need more work on this. Um, on it, but I'll let council decide, so Luke, I'm gonna go with you because you've been around forever and a day like I have been now, three hundred years, go ahead, three hundred years and seven years?
Yeah, um, you know, I just wanna pick up on, on one of the things that Jared said about, um, you know, time from staff and people. Um, and I think one of the stuff that, one of the things we should consider is, with this is really original purpose, um, and um, uh, what you want the committee to do going forward and make sure we're really defining those roles, um, the way we need to, and making sure staff has some input um, into how it's, how things are designed, because all these things we do take up time. I remember Brian telling me, or maybe it was Melinda saying, you know, you gotta staff committees and it takes time and like, you know, warning us on the amount of committees we have, so, um, I, you know, I know the group's done a lot of good work and has put a lot of the hard thought into things and items, and they wanna do good work, and so I just, we can, we just need to make sure that it aligns with, you know, the, the practicalities of capacity and other avenues for giving feedback, and we don't wanna be duplicative if those avenues already exist. Thanks.
Thank you, Danielle, then Valerie.
Thank you, mayor, um, I, I, as a former first responder, I've done a lot of research on the P R A V S. Um, I thought when they first came out, you know, they were a great idea, um, a wonderful, um, piece to, um, plug into the community policing blueprint, um, so to speak. Um, one of the, one of the things that kept popping up with all of my research on P R A V S around the nation is, is that they're meant to be a group that bridges between the community and the police department to help shore up that, um, trust between, um, the community and the police department, and to help the chief stay in touch with things that are going on in the community that he may not otherwise be aware of, cuz he can't be on all the blocks all the time and in, you know, the backyards all the time, neither can all the police officers. Um, I strongly re- um, suggest that we do redesign the P R A V. Um, I think we need to take the, um, the, the whole budget thing and look at that a little bit deeper because, um, that would, that would cause the police department to have to submit their budget like a couple of months in advance of submitting it to the city, so that would put them on a shorter schedule, and then that would have to give P R A V enough time to look at it and go through that whole thing, so I think that aspect definitely needs to be, um, looked at. Um, the resolution that I read, I think it's the resolution, Selena, there was an ordinance and then a resolution? I just wanna get clear on that, but there were two that I know, there was the really long one, and then there was the short one.
It never got approved, it was a draft.
Okay, okay, well, the shorter one that I'm referring to, instead of the really long page, when the shorter one says that they're supposed to, um, oh, I just see we've, uh, time up. Can I put a motion to put five more minutes on the clock?
All done. Thank you, Meli. Uh, can I have a motion on the floor to put, um, five more minutes?
Second. I'm seconding Danielle's motion, I think she made the motion already.
Yeah, but you guys have to wait until I like call for the motion, you guys can make it prior. All right, so it's been properly moved and seconded discussion. Hearing none, five more minutes we added, thank you, Meli.
Okay, thank you, mayor, um, one of the things that I did see in the, in the, in the, the version you guys signed was that they're allowed to meet up two, four times a year. So I don't wanna minimize them, I want them to like, be able to come at least once a month, well, no more than once a month, to make themselves open for the community to come in and, you know, address things and question or whatever, um, as we find that other P R A V S around the nation do. And I s- I strongly suggest that we do that homework and look what the other review advisory boards are doing around the country and kind of like, you know, chisel it down to fit into the Mount Rainier, um, platform, but, um, the, uh, and one thing I do wanna say is that having a P R A V here in Mount Rainier is a huge boon for the city. Um, it literally does help us look as progressive as we truly are trying to be, and to the greater community and to other counties, not only around our state, but around our nation. So, um, I, um, I, and I do have one question for Jared as the, uh, as the, uh, um, as the, uh, liaison, sorry, um, as far as, and, and, and mayor, you may, you may be able to answer this. Um, the county doesn't have oversight on our police department, so I'm kind of confused on the whole we can't do things because the county's already doing it, and chief, you may be able to answer this question, but I know I've, um, had, after the last meeting, I had a couple residents ask me that. We do have our own solo police department, how could a, how can the county tell us we can't do things with our own police department?
It's state law. But the county could dictate it because the officers are in, are sworn in through and trained through Maryland, so there's certain things. So there's certain things that they need to abide, Chief might be a little bit more specific on it, but that is basically the rules, and if certain rules are superseded by the county, we need to also respect that. So that's part of it, because if now we enter into not only like, you know, conflict with this state law, but if, let's say that police advisory board decides to say this person has committed no nothing, right? But the state says yes, it is, now you're entering a contradiction and you cannot have that. Not only that, the state level is very specific, the municipalities cannot have it. So that's very tough. So when we look at state, I know you're suggesting looking at other states, but other states that, that has to be something like locally here in Maryland, not other states, because the limitations in the, in Maryland law is a little bit different than the other states. So in other states, you know, they're being utilized, in other states also they have been, um, this, you know, this done. Because since the county serves now, so basically like I know that when people have wanted, um, to have more empowerment to this committee, it has also been suggested for, you know, for people that wanna have more empowerment and stuff like that to apply to the county one, because that's a different role for it, and the other thing is like, you also have to keep in mind that when originally this, you know, this happened, some of the concerns we also have was gonna be like the cost that it came associated with it. A small city like us cannot afford, uh, the cost that comes associated with, uh, police advisory board that's outside the county. So as, so far as the, so far as the rules state, and Chief, um, add on if there's anything I missed, is, is not allowed for, for municipalities to have the role of investigating, um, and so on, and so on, so on. So there's very things that, um, the chief could do, but even then they have to go to a review board for officers, um, and so on, correct, Chief? So there's sort of a process that officers have to go through, and they mandate even like municipal officers as well.
Yeah, okay, I.
Go ahead, wait. Time, time, I asked the chief to go ahead and give me his input, go ahead.
Uh, sure, Mayor. Uh, one of the things that's happened with state law is that the mandate has been put to the counties that the municipalities reside. So clearly the oversight, it's, uh, when we have investigations of police officers, we still do our investigations, uh, on our officers. Those investigations are then forwarded to the county's administrative charging committee. Uh, from that point, that investigation is forwarded to the police advisory board for Prince George's County. So at that point, uh, actually I'm meeting with them tomorrow night at six thirty. Uh, we're gonna do a review, uh, of the county system. But, uh, as our ordinance cur- currently stands with, with our internal, uh, PRAV, uh, for our city, I think, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Carter was mentioning, uh, the policy review and some other things. Um, there's nothing in state law that says they can't do that as an independent body, uh, for policy review. Uh, just as, uh, when we first met, uh, one of the mandates from the, from our internal board was to see our general orders manual. Our general orders is what mandates, uh, the operation of the police department. Uh, as far as take-home cruiser policies, uh, has it even become a time where, uh, questions have come up in our internal board, by our members of that board, uh, questioning what happens when our officers are working part-time assignment, secondary employment? So it's, it's good that, uh, you know, in, in, in order to show transparency to our community that, uh, we have an oversight committee, uh, uh, in-house in terms of in our city, uh, because that trust and legitimacy is, is important in our community. And as I.
I'm gonna ask, you know, hope, because time has run out, I'm gonna see if I put five minutes on the clock to give, um, Councilmember Woodall opportunity to talk. Alright, um, council, can I have five more minutes on the clock?
No, I can't.
Thank you so much, new discussion, objection, extension here, none. Okay, Chief, so if you could wrap it up in one minute, it gives us enough time. So I wanna make sure, two different things, so thank you for splitting like, why is it that, you know, the statement that it's the county, the reason why we need to do it, and the reason why they could review, I appreciate that as well.
Sure, sure. And so, so clearly, um, that oversight has been important, uh, you know, to, to ensure that, uh, we are transparent in our community. Uh, when they first came on board, um, I told our board, many chiefs don't want uh, in, internal, uh, committees, uh, given oversight, but I have no problem with it. Um, you know, we're, we're trying to get better every day. So we, we, we welcome that committee, so that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. So Valerie, I'm gonna open up the floor to you, go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you, um, and Jared, thank you for bringing this up, um, and working through this with us, I think it's important, and I think one of the things that jumps out at me when I read the, um, the ordinance for the duties, um, you're reviewing a budget, you're, um, you know, re- reviewing annually the policies, um, and regulations and practices, and you're creating a report. To me, that means, and, and then you have four meetings per year, to me, that means like you really should focus on your, your big police review, um, being done in December, um, when the budget comes out, is being worked through, um. And, and, um, and then that could be, you could have one meeting that does all three things, um, with, um, the ability for the public meetings to happen throughout the year so that you can get gain that input and, and, and the, um, things that you'd wanna see. So if I were restructuring this a little bit, I would focus on the calendar and looking at December as your, your big police review month, and then working backwards from there for the meetings to happen so that you have a concise, but, um, impactful committee. Um, and so that's, that's all I'd say, thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. So Jared, it sounds like we have to do a lot more work. What do you need from us tonight? Because I don't think we're gonna be able to solve everything tonight. What do you need from us?
I think I have a general sense of the council, I mean, I think we all agree that we need to a little bit better define the roles as laid out in the, um, in the ordinance we originally passed. I think that involves on those three topics, you know, we had like a sentence for each one of those, and we should define exactly how that happens, right? Here's the budget process, here's where we expect your input, here's how it flows in, and here's how it accounted for, and so we know like then there's not like, you know, because I don't think it's fair to you if we're asking you to provide input in the budget, and then it's just this open-ended, and when are you supposed to do it, how are you supposed to do it, how's the input flow in, how do we know it got there, et cetera, so forth, like, you know, we, we establish it, but we need, we need to give you a process, and I think, so I will work on putting that together. Um, in a proposal, I will also, I think we can define what the annual report should look like, uh, and when we would expect that to be submitted, and then I think we define the annual report and review and procedures, and, and I think maybe it's, maybe we can stagger those, you know, when we expect those things somewhat, because then it doesn't create like, you know, we're asking you to do an annual report in December, plus review the budget, plus, you know, all this other stuff, um, at the same, at the same time, so. And I think that would be clear. When I look at the handful of, of other cities, like there's, you know, I think to Danielle's point, I wanna be clear, if we didn't have this state law, HB six seventy, that basically co-opted this role from the city and established in the county, I think this would look different. But we do, so I mean, that's, you know, as much as I'd like to mirror this on other regions, we can't, because the state has very much limited what we can do. I think when I looked at, when I've looked at other cities', uh, police review advisory boards, what it basically usually is, is a, you know, it's a session, I mean, they may have some limited functions like we have established, and then the chief basically just reports out, and it's a time, you know, on things in the community, it's a time that folks could come in and listen and hear a little bit, and a little bit deeper, um, than, you know, you might have in a typical council meeting where we're covering every single topic under the sun every two weeks and four weeks. Uh, but there's not like, uh, there's not like a deeper in any of the few, um, advisory boards, Hyattsville's or, um, Tacoma Parks, there's not like, it's, it's basically sort of an information flow out, right? And so, and, and again, because largely, a lot of the things cities were thinking of doing got constrained by HB six seventy when it passed, um, so. I will, so I will take all this feedback, I mean, what I really wanna do is, we've never had the sense of, sort of the consolidated sense of council, especially since this thing passed, and, um, and I think it's helpful, I will take all this feedback and come back to council with a, work with cities, uh, Mr. Kamali and, uh, Chief Alston, and put together, I think, uh, uh, our expectations of these, of these roles in, as laid out in the ordinance and how we, how we meet them, so.
Thank you for that, I think that will like help with the conversation a little bit more, I think it's more of the sense of the collective. So those two, three, two or three things are still gonna be in the ordinance for it to be like more clearly, even if it's like a little paragraph underneath to define it a little bit more. But yeah, I think Mr. Kamali should be able to help you with that deadlines and information and so on, alright? So Jared, thank you so much for bringing this up and hope we gave you a little bit more clarity and, um,
Thank you.
I know, it's tough because they got it the whole thing, so it's mainly at this point, um, more of like, if, and some, some cities are doing it more like if me be meat kind of thing. And I'll close with that, I don't want also people to think that because part of the things is to review the order, so they have to review it every single year, because we really don't change the order, so if there's no change, there's no change, and if they work fine, they work fine. Okay, so I wanna make sure that's a point across, alright. Thank you so much, so now we're gonna go back to the agenda item number three. Alma, uh, the resident is here, correct?
Yes, Mayor, uh, Mr. Campos is here.
Hi, Mr. Campos.
Campos, yes.
Hi, Mr. Campos, how are you? Uh, so thank you for joining us tonight, can you let us know, um, what changes are gonna be made to, um, the household, please?
So the biggest, uh, question I guess up in the air is the addition in the back. We have a twelve by six, twelve foot by six foot addition, one-story addition that we're trying to add on to the residence, and it's gonna be laundry room and half bathroom. And besides that, I mean, everything else inside the property is just gonna be completely revamped, renovated. Sorry.
If you could off after, and it wasn't very clear to me, can you go ahead on it, something about like, um, in addition, in addition in the first floor that's still up in the air, is that what you're telling me? So what's?
So.
So do me a favor, a favor, key, cut the information into two different things. One, what is it that has already been approved that you're presenting on, and then what are you working on potentially being approved?
So what has been approved is the entire interior, exterior renovation and alteration of the addition of one bathroom upstairs, uh, renovation on all the electric panel, upgrade on the furnace, um, opening up the main level. The, and all that has been approved by the, by the county and the city, we have a partial permit for that. But what's up in the air as, as of right now is the twelve by six foot addition that we wanna create in the back of the property. It's not extending past the property setbacks, it's just a one-level, simple twelve by six concrete slab addition that we wanna create in the back. And that's gonna be used for half bathroom and utility room.
So I will tell you this, that the council will only contemplate in this discussion what's already been approved by the county. Usually we go by whatever's approved by the county and recommended for the city for approval. So, um, that's gonna be a different, uh, a different potential conversation, so.
I hate to interrupt also, but the, the county has approved the addition, we're just waiting for city approval on the addition.
Okay, so Alma, go ahead.
They have been approved for both permits, um, Mayor.
Okay, because when I asked you to be in the air, sometimes like we have residents that come in that have a, a secondary thing they're working on, so both have been approved by the county, correct? And there's no, nothing that the, the city review board needs to like, uh, visit, Alma, everything's good?
Hmm, not at all, they, they all have been approved by the county, so what he meant is that we're just waiting for the second part of this presentation.
Okay, and the second part of the presentation will include what?
The addition, uh, Mr. Campos, you just wanna give a little bit on, on that one?
Uh, again, it's just a twelve by six foot rear addition, and we're doing a one-level addition on a concrete slab. But that, that addition is just twelve by six feet, that's that red portion, the highlighted red portion in the back of the property, and it's gonna be separated into two rooms, a half bathroom and utility room. And that, that's the only plan right there. It's gonna have match, matching siding of the property, it's gonna have shingle roof, nothing, nothing crazy fancy, but everything very clean and consistent.
Okay, Alma, any, any concerns regarding the property presentation, anything that we need to make aware before I pass it to Luke?
No, not at all, me.
Okay, so Luke, um, Councilmember Cheswick, can you, um, give your spiel to the resident? You have it already down, the Brian Naylor spiel?
Yeah, thank you. Um, this is something that we just tell everyone who comes before us for this work. Um, you know, please make sure no work starts before eight AM or after eight PM. Um, the city has, uh, an urban tree canopy, an urban forest, uh, part of it's city code, I'm sure Alma's, um, told you about it, that affects sort of trees that are beyond a certain diameter, um, in, in, in size. Um, and those trees get protection under the city code, so Alma can fill you in in case here are any constructions going on kinda near there. Um, we also ask that around those trees, they get protected, you know, with an orange fence to make sure we're not getting any heavy machinery or anything like that, um, on those roots. Um, if you're doing any digging, also be mindful of our ground is mostly clay. So make sure piles of clay aren't near sidewalks or neighbors' yard, because when it rains, they'll get um, sort of a, a red river of clay, um, either going out into the sidewalk or into a neighbor's yards. Um, and that's it, um, really hope your construction goes well and appreciate, um, you coming here before us.
I appreciate you guys. Um, thankfully, Alma, Alma explained if, just to add it in there, uh, she's been phenomenal with explaining down to construction times, down to dumpster permits, how long they last, like every last little bit. Unfortunately, we did have the, we had the mistake of starting work, starting demolition, uh, ahead of time, and unfortunately we had a stop work order come. So we've had the worst of the worst, and we're just trying to make all of our wrongs right at this point.
Yeah, our, our team is definitely gonna make sure that you get all the information, and if you cross one line, they'll make sure to remind you what the line is, they're very good at that, and I mean, to hear that Alma gave you the whole spiel. Uh, we usually give it to you in, in camera as well, uh, mainly because that way we could go back and be like, um, we gave you the whole spiel on tape, so that way you heard it from Alma, you heard it from us, so there is no, um, I never heard it, because when people get caught doing what they're not supposed to be doing, they, they quickly change their tune, but I appreciate the fact that you, um, held yourself responsible, and thank you, Alma and your team for, uh, making sure that we're order came through, and we're working on making sure we have a flawless, uh, transition into the construction that's happening, okay?
Yeah, true, but I appreciate everybody's time.
Perfect, thank you so much. So Alma's gonna follow up with you with the final, uh, permits that you need in behalf of the city, okay?
So much, you guys have a great evening.
Thank you so much, thank you Alma for everything. Do I have you for any other point, Alma, or you're done for today?
I'm done for today, Mayor.
Alright, have a good night, and please extend the thank you to the whole team, okay?
I will, thank you.
Okay, bye. Alright, so moving on to item, going back to like the reset of the agenda. Uh, item number five, presentation discussion of having a drug-free, uh, drug-free zone. Designation to certain areas of the city, the mayor and council discussed a proposal, Councilmember Carter, um, ooh, those letters are little, to designate certain areas of the city as drug-free zones, go ahead.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, every, it seems like everybody's tripping over the drug-free zones, everybody wants to say drug-free school zones, because it's really what it should be. Um, I submitted this agenda on behalf of Ward One resident and business owner Heather Ware, um, who is here, thank you, Heather. Heather came to me a couple of months ago while they were getting their business ready to open and complained about problems in the bus terminal area. She actually sent an email to both myself and another council member, I then forwarded that email to the city manager, CCing her in on it. And he recommended that she contact the chief, which she did, and chief directed her to contact Lieutenant Calloway, which she did. Um, they set up a meeting and had it, and I know this because I was CC'd in on all of those emails. After the, he, after that meeting, Heather asked, um, myself, and I think she asked the other council member, um, what she should do next with the information that she gathered, and I suggested that she bring it to a work session per the council rules and procedures. Um, now anytime a resident or business owner, um, contacts me about a situation, I make it a point to go to the area, and I know most of us do, I think all of us do this, uh, to make, you know, initiate to go to the area of business or residents to lay eye on the situations ourselves. I did that with this situation. And, uh, I went down to Heather's business around nine thirty on a weeknight, and I wasn't there more than five minutes outside the front of her business, and I was propositioned twice. Yes, you heard me correctly, I was propositioned twice. I, um, witnessed some other things, um, going on over there in the terminal, and as a result, I called the non-emergency number and reported it. Um, the police did show up shortly thereafter, and, um, I watched three groups of people disperse immediately. Uh, I spoke with the police officer, actually laughing at the fact that this happened to me, I mean, it, I was gobsmacked. Anyway, um, and the officer said that that's usually what happens, when they pull up, they roll out, and when they leave, they come back. Now, on that note, I do wanna thank Chief Austin for having a car down there both during the day and during the night right now, I've taken notice of that because I've gone back around that area a lot, and I really appreciate that, Chief. Now, while the police are stationed at the bus terminal now, they are, this is a reaction to the issues that have recently occurred. I would like to see us, the council, do something more proactive. Um, so we have the liberty to protect our public areas and parks as we and future councils see the need. This is why when Heather asked me about designating certain areas around the city as drug-free zones, I couldn't argue with it. This is why when Heather asked me about designating certain areas around the city as drug-free zones, I couldn't argue with it. Um, at the last council meeting, Councilmember Stoltz Fuss talked about how the city was designated a school zone years ago and how that will help facilitate the school, or the, excuse me, the stat sign camera program. Well, I would like to think that it would also be an easy consideration to help designate large public areas like the bus terminal, the business district there at Bunker Hill and Thirty Fourth, and again down at Varnum Street, drug-free zones. These are public after all and inside a designated school zone, and one of these zones even houses our public library. Now, I would like to see us work either or with our city attorney and/or state legislative team to write and introduce some kind of legislation that would allow us and other cities municipalities to protect our public areas and parks from the coming open air drug markets. And with that, I will, uh, I would like to turn this presentation over to Heather to, uh, finish this presentation as she, uh, requested to the council. Thank you.
Danielle, you have to ask the chair to turn the, the presentation over, so please make sure you follow procedure. Okay, that's the same procedure as being asked for everybody. Okay?
Okay, um, Mayor, may I please turn this over to Heather?
So Heather, you have approximately five minutes because it's taking a little longer than we wanted to, to make sure, um, you run out of, you don't run out of time. To make sure, um, you give us a conversation, please make sure that when you present, um, avoid using anybody's name if possible, um, as part of the decorum, okay? And it's good to see you. I apologize, I had to go get more water. Um, it was good to see you yesterday as well. I've been seeing a lot of you this week. Alright, so go ahead, uh, Heather, the, the mic is yours.
Okay, hi, thank you. I wanna first start out by thanking the mayor and council for listening to us and hearing our concerns. I wanna thank the city manager for you know, dealing with me back and forth and Lieutenant Callaway, the chief of police as well. And then Luke and Danielle for listening to my concerns, being my Ward One council folk. This is my business partner, Derek. And, um, so basically, you know, we've seen a lot of activity. We have cameras here. A lot of you have heard my complaints. Um, the police, they do come, everybody leaves, they usually move up to Thirty Third and Bunker Hill or the Artist Lofts area outside of there. Um, they come back. We find people sitting on our stoops and stuff a lot, and we ask them to move, could be cuz it's a business, and they say they, they don't feel comfortable sitting at the bus stop because so much is going on there. So, um, it's not actually the people that are, you know, causing the disruption at the terminal that are sitting on our stoops, it's other folks. Um, you know, I know the police can't sit there all the time, uh, they have other duties that they need to do, um, but what I am wondering if the council can do is, um, you know, offer, think of some solutions, lighting under the awnings, maybe, you know, they have the stationary cameras, but I think illuminating the areas with bright lights under the awnings there, um, you know, drug-free zones, whatever you guys can do, but I, I'd like to see, you know, some change and just wonder what what you guys may think about what's going on. And, and I've sunk my, I sunk my life savings, we sunk our life savings into this place and we're so happy to be here. We think the downtown area is a diamond in the rough. It's a great area. There's just, you know, we've seen some uptick and I know there's crime uptick everywhere. So we just would like some feedback on, you know, what we can do next and what the, what the council can do to help us in terms of passing some stuff and, um, you know, do, do you have something you wanna add?
I, I feel like the police have their hands tied. Because they'll come, they'll sit there and when people start to get rowdy, they say something to them. Last week, we were having meet and greets with potential clients. We had three separate clients in our yard. And the police came across the loudspeaker from their vehicle and said, hey, you guys need to move along. And one of the guys got belligerent, came across, started arguing with the police. The police had to get out of his, out of his cruiser. They started throwing things at the police and our clients moved into another section so they wouldn't get caught in the line of fire because it sounded that intense. And it's really the folks that are hanging across there, what the guy who was doing all this with the policeman told him, he said, I just got out of jail. I don't care. I'll go right back. And then I'mma come back and I'mma do what I do. There's gotta be something that we can do to stop them from wanting to even come down here because the consequences are so high. Drug-free zone, I feel like would do that.
And then if, so if people are hanging out, people are there for the bus. We understand that. It, it, it's a public space. Um, after, if somebody's hanging out there longer than three hours, they're obviously not taking the bus. They're, you know, there, there's guys that hang out there that wear hoodies, masks and sunglasses. You cannot see their faces or anything. It's, it's a, it can be a little scary sometimes. But I just wanted to come before you all and, um, we just wanted to state our case and ask for your help and tell us, you know, what, what you should advise that we do, or if you need more feedback from us, we're always here. And we also invite you all to come down. Uh, Danielle's been down, Jared's been down. Come on by, check us out.
Anytime.
Okay, thank you so much, Heather. Um, I, I would tell you that usually we have requiring for council not to bring businesses because then it sounds like we're creating a lot to supply one businesses specifically. So I, I need to make sure that we're understanding that this conversation is gonna be had, but it's not necessarily aimed at like solving your only case. It's like dealing with downtown. So I wanna make sure that disclaimer is on because we have requested this from other customers as well, not to bring, um, the immediate rest of the business. So I wanna make sure we stay in line where we have asked other people to do, okay? And this is why I like, I, I allow you to talk, but usually like we try not to for this specific reason, right? So what I have not heard, maybe Chief can help us with this. What is the difference between school-free zones, right, school zones, you know, school drug-free zones and drug zones? Do does anything changes? Do they have more power to be bigger citations? Because this is the part of the stuff that we have not talked and, uh, Danielle, with a simple yes or no, um, how this conversation had been had with, um, with our city manager or chief when it comes to what this really is. Because if we're just gonna put a sign and call it something and nothing is attached to it, I kinda feel like we're just putting a sign.
Uh, you need to ask that question to Heather. I can't answer that. She's the one who.
No, I'm asking you as the customer, have you talked to the, to the, to the city manager? And have you held a meeting with the city manager regarding this issue?
Yeah, we did, we did have a small discussion on the, uh, front street of the, uh, of the, uh, uh, the, uh, building. When I was leaving, we had a conversation about a few different things, but we did discuss this and, um, you know, he knew that Heather was going on and he had passed it on to chief, so yeah, we did, we did come up with solutions or anything that he knew that Heather was working on.
Okay, thank you. Um, there was nothing in the package for the rest of us to see. It was just like a presentation, so I'm not sure exactly where everybody else with the page, but Chief, can you let us know, um, what exactly is a drug-free zone and how does the difference shape from a school-free drug zone that the whole city is?
Yes, yes, Mayor. Um, hi, Heather, and what's your partner's name?
Derek.
Derek?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Derek. Okay, fine, fine. What's your expectation of the drug-free zone? Maybe we can start there. For what you know.
Maybe your consequences when they do get locked up with.
Hold, hold on. I know, I don't wanna turn this into a conversation, okay? So Chief, can you let us know to get better clarity of, of what it is? Because right now, we'll tell you that the expectation of people hanging around there and being arrested for being there is not gonna, is definitely not gonna fly in the city. There has to be a reason and a cause for them to be arrested. But King, and I'm sorry putting you in the spot because I don't think you, you were preview of, um, this item, uh, being brought up the way, the way it is, it sounds, but.
It's, it's okay, Mayor. I would just wanna make.
I am sorry, I called up on you because I know that you were here for a different thing, yeah.
Uh, right now in the state of Maryland, um, there's a Maryland code or Maryland criminal law, uh, five dash, uh, six twenty-seven, and that speaks of the, uh, drug-free zones uh, in schools. So that's an area that stretches, uh, about a thousand feet away from a school or a bus stop, uh, a school bus stop. So in, uh, D C, you may have seen their new crime, uh, laws or criminal law codes where they have, uh, drug-free zones that can pop up anywhere. We don't have that in the state of Maryland right now. So it may take in, uh, legal opinion, uh, you know, I'm, I'm here on the enforcement side and it may take uh, us to approach our, uh, legislatures, maybe next session. Uh, but currently, what our staff has been doing, I hope Heather and, uh, and Darren, I hope you've seen the recent changes. I, I know Darren mentioned an incident that happened the other day, but my mandate for my team, uh, is we're running constant overtime there, as you see, uh, where we're pressing out those people who are not there to utilize those buses in the bus terminals. Uh, my goal is that we will have a peaceful area there where a family can come and catch a bus with little children, not have people there selling drugs, cursing. Um, we're gonna move those people along. So we're gonna keep pressing them out. This is not a, uh, a time where we're gonna let off and we're gonna keep pressing them out as long as we have team here. So please rest assured that this is a major focus for us. It's about quality of life for our residents, for our business owners. So we, we've heard your call and we need you to be a, 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 a great business partner, uh, as you have been. Share footage with us. Uh, uh, our approach is now a, uh, not just a reactive approach, but a proactive approach. Uh, approach where we're there before you have to call us. Now, if we leave, uh, uh, just like the officers who are on overtime there, they don't handle any other calls in the city but that bus terminal. Unless there's a, a very violent call involving our officers, where we all have to go. But rest assured, this is our focus now. It's gonna continue to be our focus.
Okay, so to clarify something, Chief, to make sure we're on the same page. Having the city being a school drug-free zone, that means it's basically the whole city, basically the bus stop there already are, correct? So in our end, we don't need to like, um, create a new law, well, we need to let, we need to work with the legislators to see if that's even, uh, an, an option for them to even put it into Maryland law at this point, correct? And then I'll open it up to council and I see, I do see, uh, comments in the chat, so I'll go ahead and address those as well. Yes, Chief?
Yes, um, if that's considered, as I'm looking at Maryland law, and this is just a, a charting, it said school and school buses. And I did mention bus stops, but it actually says school and school buses. And the, uh, and what that is, is increased fines for those areas. If there is drug activity there, if there is possession with intention to distribute, uh, or sell or manufacture or delivery of drugs.
Okay, so I'm gonna open up to council. Thank you for clarifying that cuz I wanna make sure we're on the same page. Um, because at this point, it sounds like it's a lot of information. It's nothing, there's nothing there, okay? Um, so I'm gonna go with Valerie, uh, Jared, go ahead.
Um, yeah, and, um, thank you, uh, Councilmember Carter and Heather for coming to the city council to talk about this. I think the bus stop area is definitely a challenging area. I think, uh, Chief Austin, when I first started, I had talked to you a little bit about crime prevention through environmental design. Um, obviously, um, Rhode Island Avenue is the state highway. Um, and so making improvements to lighting and things like that, um, can be, uh, challenging for the city to, to tackle. Um, just because it is state man, state highway. Um, um, but I do think there are a lot of ways we can approach, uh, better public safety. I think once construction on the city hall building is done, it won't look as, um, as rough. Um, I think that's one thing. Um, I think also the construction of Memorial Park, it, you know, once all that construction is kind of done, I feel like that might settle some of it. Um, but I do think, um, you know, in, in heightened, uh, security is important. I think potentially Chief going and working with, um, you know, State Highway, um, getting, I know we, um, Womata had come out at one point, um, to clean up the cigarette butts around the, the, uh, the bus station. And I think so more maintenance of, uh, these properties, I think is, is critical. So it might be like working with them to create like a little task force, um, to, to, to develop, um, you know, maintenance plans that can actually make sure that it's, it's lit. I think lighting the bus stops underneath would be a good step, um. And I think, you know, just continued conversation about this. I think it's really critical. And I think, you know, as we continue to build the city, you know, we wanna make sure that people can walk around and feel safe and, and comfortable in that area. So, um, I do thank you all for bringing this up and I, and I would definitely recommend working with State Highway, um, work with, I mean, if you need, if we need to bring in design architect companies to, to look at potential solutions that can address the crime and the, the, the feeling of crime, even if it's not always criminal behavior. Um, I think that's important, so, thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. I think the other thing to point out is like the bus stops do not belong to the, the bus shelters do not belong to the city neither. The Ramada, actually, the whole plaza also belongs to the city. So there's like a lot of, um, work that we do in order to like serve our residents. But there's an understanding of, of service, but yeah, there's limitations as well and we could work in collaboration. Valerie, I'm gonna wrap it up because I, I cannot do that. Go ahead.
Just really quickly, I think, um, Jared's presentation on the better, uh, the better bus, um, plan also helped address some of this as well, so just.
Perfect. Thank you. Next time, hold it until you're like, go second round. That was your one warning cuz you never do it. You're actually pretty good, Valerie. Thank you. Alright, Jared, go ahead. Jared's like, that was gonna be my two minutes. Go ahead.
Yep, should I add some time? There's only two minutes remaining, okay. Make a motion to add five minutes.
Cause we probably moved in a second. Discussion, objection, extension's here now. Five more minutes added. Go ahead, Jared. Your turn.
Uh, nope, Danielle, just wanna thank you for bringing, uh, this, this in tonight. And Heather, I appreciate you taking the time, uh, both to come tonight, but also to talk with our, uh, city manager and, and police chief. And I just want you to know, and you, you know this cuz I've said it, but I really really appreciate the investment you've made in the city for years, the investment you made in our downtown, uh, and, and the, you know, the importance, I think of the, some of the challenges you're experiencing are ones kind of writ large in our downtown. Um, you know, I spent a lot of time in our downtown as well. I use the transit center a lot and I, you know, not not immune to the same things, seeing and seeing the same things. So I appreciate, um, Chief, I do appreciate your background on the D C drug-free zones. I did have, that did clarify some of the questions I had about the, what they've established. Uh, it does sound there's some additional limitations of what we can do in the state of Maryland. However, it does sound like there's things that you are doing already, upstaffing. I know with the project, um, Safe Neighborhoods, uh, there's additional, um, camera visibility continuously in our downtown, which kind of will give you, give a way to kind of immediately respond. Um, so I think, you know, I think what I would look to is just the addition, you know, additional steps we can take on top of things already. I know there's challenges in terms of dealing with public space and, um, you know, how we can enforce lo- ordering laws, laws while also kind of balancing the need, uh, you know, the legal, um, legal, uh, within, within certain legal bounds. Uh, and on that point, on the Womata, I think Chief, if there's a way we can engage with Womata Transit Police, or I'm, I'm happy, I know you, you know, I have a good relationship with folks all the way up the chain there. I'm happy to help you and Mister Kamali echo that message if we sort of get additional support uh, there as well. And, um, so yeah, I just, uh, again, I thank folks for bringing this. It's been a challenge. I wanna, you know, obviously not balance the, balance the right for people to be in a public space, um, not have the pendulum swing so far the other way that we're arresting people for things that we, you know, like marijuana, you know, marijuana, like marijuana, there's things, things that are, you know, we don't wanna obviously go too far, but I realize there has kind of been a deterioration partly prompted by COVID, partly lots of other factors that has sometimes made our downtown a challenging place to spend extended time in. So thank you.
Jared, your last sentence was cut off. Something, last thing I heard was like something challenged and that's the last thing I heard.
No, I just said, uh, there, there's some things that are in the recent year, in the, in the increase in the recent years that have made our downtown a little bit more challenging to spend extended time in.
Thank you so much, and we look forward to your presentation to address some of the things that Ramada's bringing to the bus stops, you know, so that's a little help in our end. Luke, go ahead.
Thanks, um, Heather, thanks for being here. Danielle, thanks for managing so much of this and, and helping to bring this before us. Um, Chief, thanks for the outline of kind of stuff that you have, are thinking about. I think what would be most helpful for me is if we could have a plan of action, something that spells out exactly what we're going to do for this. Um, Chief, I'd imagine you'd be able to kind of think about that. And I think there are a few categories. There's sort of enforcement, sort of like what we can do and if you need anything from us, like I'm not, I'm not convinced like a drug-free work zone would, would do anything. I think we could do things now. There are probably laws in the books that could probably handle this. Maybe drug-free helps, maybe it doesn't, I don't know. If it does, great. Um, if that's something we can look into, great. Um, but I think there are others, I, I'm, I'm interested in sort of the actions that can be taken to effectuate change here. I heard talk about it, but sort of like, we're gonna do, we're getting enforced laws this way. Um, with this much staff doing these things at these times. Um, and then, you know, to a point that Valerie made, like, we're gonna impact change with, um, Um, and then, you know, to a point that Valerie made, like, we're gonna impact change with, um, design. We're gonna have lighting here. Um, uh, we're gonna look at things here. Once Potts Hall is, is, is construction's finished. Um, we're gonna talk to Womata about them installing lights here. Here's the process for that. Here's the timeline and sort of have like, the actions in those different categories, like enforcement, design, maybe there's another category. And then timeline. So you'd have going out to the right, like how long is it gonna take to kind of do these things? Um, and I think coming back with a plan of action for safety in our downtown core to the mayor's point of this not being about one sort of business. This is like, core safety, because these, these are issues that we've heard for, for a lo- a long time and, um, you know, it's, the city's never solved it, not because people don't wanna solve it, like, people before us on council have been trying to hit, deal with these issues and trying to solve it. And, and so I think if we can have a really concrete plan of action, that people can see and, um, would lead to something, I think that is my goal. And if we could get that and have a timeline on that, I think that would be a really good follow-up from this conversation. Thanks.
So Luke, just one point, um, the city manager's not here, so we need to direct this to the city manager. That's the only thing to make sure we're respecting the, the channel commands. So, you know, I know Mr. Kamali's gonna review the tape and also Melissa's here as our clerk, right? But I wanna make sure that, um, we submitted to, if you could put it in writing, submit it to the city manager, um, some of the things so he could hear what you just said, but I need to make sure that we're not directing, out of respect, because it's not our staff, um, that we're directing, how do you call it, like the, this request towards, um, the city manager. So that way, um, you know, this item could be brought. So, a point of information, school zones are school drug free zones. So that's what, that's, that's where, um, that's part of the reason why it was a little confusing and why you wanna like segregate into just as a drug zone. Cause, at least in our case, it's like the whole, basically the whole city is that, is, um, between the school, between, um, the bus stops that we have, we have plenty of bus stops, like, you don't have to travel so far, like, uh, Perry and thirty eight. On the Brentwood side, it's a school zone, it's a school stop as well and so on and so on, right? So just on Perry, I think there's like two, if not three bus stops, um, just on that side of Perry, not even counting like the other side. So it's a lot. And down the street on Otis, I think there's another bus stop as well down, Otis and I think maybe Sanyar Street, Heather, Otis and thirty five around there. So the thousand feet from a school or, or bus stop, that's, that's not concerning to me because we're like overlapping a thousand feet everywhere. And again, I think that's the beautiful thing about knowing this. I think we get a little bit more clarity. The other thing is I remember when state law is addressed, we could try it, but that means like, everybody has to be in tune. So I think that more or less like they're gonna like direct us back to the fact that their school free zones are on it. And there's always a hesitation of people having, um, overused their power and that zones to like target certain groups. So, um, I'm gonna take a pause and, um, and go to the quick chat. I have a lot of things, okay, regarding this one. Okay. Uh, yeah, Heather, there's a school bus stop at thirty fifth and thirty fifth and thirty, thirty eight and Perry as well. So two of those are ones that we mentioned. Thank you for that. I see two minutes remaining. Um, said, please provide the rest stats, stop in prison, other statistics that justify making the drugs free zones, calls for services, et cetera, how many times the same person has been cited. We would like to ensure the civil rights are not being violated. Please look at legislation from other jurisdictions. Uh, this is from Sharnet Robinson, that's, that also lives in Perry. So I think that we already established that, the city being, um, and I wrap this up right now, Emily. The city being, how do you call it, like a school, zone is also school drug free zone. So that's there. So everything that, you know, that we're hearing, even with the stats that, that you know, PD is putting out, they're not targeting a specific group. They are just like, you know, um, arresting based on, on calls and first they usually ask, as you heard, like in more than one person saying, they usually ask them to like move out of the, you know, keep on moving, right? Unless there's like reasons for them to, um, uh, move forward. All right. So Luke, you're gonna send a, a little blurb to the city manager and, um, and then we'll, we'll move on from there on. Okay? Thank you Heather for being here and I'll see you probably this week. All right. Thank you. Bye. All right, moving on to the next item. Ooh. Is this you Jared? Yeah. Presentation discussion on Ramada Metro Better Bus Network update and Mariner feedback. Consider your stuff could provide a summary of Ramada's just released bus network redesigning and providing suggestions for Mariner feedback. Can you guys please dial in your mics? It is you Jared. Uh, from Mariner feedback to Ramada Board of Leadership. So, I wanna start by saying thank you Jared for doing this, um, and being in top to make sure that the city of Mariner is like giving positive feedback and we continue being engaged. So definitely Ramada knows that, um, the minute I get any notice, it's like we have feedback ready for them. So, go on. Uh, and thank you for submitting our presentation. It's, it's gonna make it a little bit easier. And if we could put it up online, it'll help easier for residents to also follow through. I know it's in the package. So go ahead. Floor's yours.
Yep, thank you. And, um, yeah, no, that's a agendas. This item's in the package and you can find on the, um, recording. And so that folks can, also take a look at it later. I will move through it quickly because I know it is rather lengthy, but, um, so, and again, just for context, folks know transit's really important to folks in the city. Um, you know, in the northern census tracts in the city, uh, transit ridership is as high as forty, fifty percent of household, mainly because folks will have cars. Most folks in the historic, uh, House Census Track, the southern one, also are really prolific users of transit, um, you know, myself and others included. So really important that we provide feedback to our regional transit agency who we do not directly fund, but the Maryland, DC, Virginia, and the federal government fund jointly. So, a little bit of background here. Last year, Metro looked at a comprehensive overhaul of the entire bus network. Uh, that's been in place largely for the last sixty, seventy years. This is the biggest redesign in probably, um, about seven decades. Um, so the idea was to look at the system holistically, how the, given how the regions change over time to improve access to frequent transit, promote equity, uh, and create a simpler network. Uh, there's, right now, there's two hundred bus routes that Metro runs and to another two hundred fifty by seven other regional providers. It's very complicated. Um, and they're looking at simplifying that. So la- as of May twenty four last year, folks remember around July, Metro released a result of a network redesign. They carried out of the past year, yeah, sorry, I mean, May twenty four, right now, they've released the results of the network redesign, uh, with initial input they had, uh, last year. Uh, the changes will be approved by this fall with implementation in early twenty twenty five, which is important. Why we provide feedback now. Uh, next slide. Yep. So if you can see, they started, uh, twenty twenty two, uh, we, uh, council provided feedback in twenty twenty three. Right now, they, they've released their revised visionary network, uh, and are taking feedback right now. And, uh, they'll adopt in, uh, fall and then implement next year. Next slide. Um, in general, the feedback they got last year was, um, obviously folks want more frequent service, more reliable service, more service on the weekends, and longer hours operation. That did supersede, uh, universal coverage. Folks were like, I want more service on key corridors where there's a lot of ridership in need. And not just, uh, low capacity, low frequency transit every, every few blocks. Next slide. Uh, I just wanna clarify again why this is so important. Uh, you know, most bus customers in this region are people of color, eighty-three percent. Uh, most are low income, sixty percent and, uh, no car, fifty-eight percent. And, in Mount Rainier, uh, there's a tremendous, or that lines up with our population of color. We have enormous low and moderate income population in our apartments and within our house, uh, within the, um, historic House Census Track as well. And there's many, many households in this community with no car, wherein this is transit access is incredibly important. Next slide. So, um, Metro proposed basically, uh, provide at least thirty minute frequency, thirty new routes, twenty overnight, twenty-four bus network. And, um, additional, uh, frequency. And again, folks can take a look at this later. I just wanted to get information to folks to look at, but obviously wanna move through quickly, to get to the meat of this, which is the changes for our community. Yep. And so Metro, uh, looking at this, did make some changes. They're, um, provide consistent service levels through the day, which meant some areas having less frequent, uh, better as service and equity focused communities. And that's communities like ours in Prince George's County. And making service a little bit more faster and more direct, which means, uh, some longer walk to bus stops. And, um, you know, some, some routes being cut, while others are being added. Yep. All right. Said this already, but, um, it's critical, transit access critical for Mount Rainier. Womata's, uh, redesign efforts for the bus network do impact the city. There's some significant routing changes, uh, including route renumbering. Uh, extension of the major bus lines that go through our community to improve commercial access and connectivity. Uh, general improvements in frequency in, for the city. Uh, and then there's actually a system why they're proposing consolidating. They're cutting seven percent of the bus routes across the system. That actually only impacts one single bus stop in the city. Um, so we actually came out of this process, uh, pretty, pretty good. Uh, next slide. I just wanna say why this was important. Our feedback really, really mattered. Uh, basically every, yeah, it's, it's, if, for the, every, the forty, fifty percent of folks that take transit our community, we provided a pretty lengthy and thoughtful letter. Uh, we basically got everything we wanted. We got the extension. So what they're gonna do, the G eight, which runs all the way downtown and ends at K Wood Gardens, that now is gonna run, um, all the way to West Hyattsville, with higher frequency. Uh, the B two, which now dead ends at our downtown transit terminal, is gonna continue going up along thirty eighth, along Hamilton Road and to West Hyattsville. And there's gonna be increased, increased and simplified service on Rhode Island Avenue. All right. And this is a little bit of a shot of what it, what it looks like. Again, at the end of the presentation, there's a website that folks can go to and look at your specific trips. And, uh, and specific route changes. Um, so they basically renumbering a lot of the lines here, but, most of the core, basically for us, almost all the core service is gonna stay the same. Uh, with a little bit of reroute numbering and, uh, two of the bus routes that runs our community actually end up going, extending all the way to hot, West Hyattsville. Yep. So I'll just go through very quickly, uh, some of the route changes. Uh, there's a consolidated express service now from Green Belt, going all the way down to Rhode Island Station, hitting, as you can see, Mount Rainier Terminal. Uh, so service until midnight, uh, and you know, if no folks have wanted to move along or route one quarter much more quickly, uh, this is the service that's gonna, be implemented to provide it. Uh, another, uh, College Park to Rhode Island Avenue Station, uh, same thing. Um, College Park to Rhode Island Avenue, then coming over through downtown Hyattsville, again, hitting our transit terminal. And, uh, heading down to Rhode Island Avenue Station as well. So, two very frequent lines of Rhode Island Avenue and then forking up one to college, Hyattsville College Park, one to Green Belt. Uh, P forty, this is if you've ever taken the T eighteen, uh, to New Carrollton, go along, um, Blainsburg Road and through Landover Hills, all the way to New Carrollton. This actually stays the same, goes to Rhode Island Avenue. And again, because that line goes through our city, it's another, yet another high frequency line, uh, going into downtown DC for us. Next slide. D thirty four, this is the, um, this is the G eight, uh, that folks, uh, now ends at basically K Wood Apartments. Um, this is good, this is actually, it's a fantastic extension. This is one we asked for. So instead of ending at K Wood and turning around, it goes all the way to the house, Hyattsville. So if you live on the western side of the city or within a couple of blocks of eastern, you just walk over. And you get a one seat ride, uh, every fifteen minutes or even faster to, um, West Hyattsville Station. I know we have this metro station is just a little bit far, farther than, unless you live on the northern side of the city, this station is just a little bit too far to walk to. Um, but having frequent bus service there is gonna be really, really helpful. And then conversely, it continues going all the way to Brooklyn and then downtown as it did previously. Uh, P forty two, this is, uh, basically a route, route that goes from Tacoma, uh, down to Fort Lincoln, uh, goes by again, our bus terminal as well. And then continues over to New Carrollton. It basically comply, uh, combines the bus, the T fourteen and then what used to be the, uh, F one. That actually drove through the center of our community and like Rainier Ave is a very weird route. Um, that's gonna be moved a little bit west to, uh, Eastern Avenue. Next slide. Sorry. C forty one Anacostia, this is the B two that runs, uh, downtown from basically Anacostia, Capitol Hill, up Blainsburg Road. It's twenty-four hour service. Will continue to be, uh, and now they do make this great extension of basically running it up from our terminal all the way up thirty eighth, Hamilton, West Hyattsville. So if you're on the western side of the city, within walking distance of thirty eighth or downtown terminal, you can now walk to this, grab the bus and it'll take you to West Hyattsville. Previously, all these routes basically just stopped at Mount Rainier. And didn't go the extra mile. So, you know, forgetting to the metro, um, it's the green line, which is huge for so many folks in our city. This is gonna be incredibly helpful. Next slide. All right. So, um, I'm gonna put together a board. There's, uh, inputs due in, um, mid-July. So I'll bring this to our next, uh, work session, but basically wanna write in broad support of these changes and service increases and thank the Womata Board for, and staff for taking in, taking all our feedback and incorporating all of it, because this is literally almost everything we wanted. Um, especially in a constrained funding environment. Uh, you know, and just to say, we, you know, thanks from them for maintaining or improving levels of service, uh, and speaking, you know, there are some more transfers in some ways that, part of that trade-off was that higher bus service, less duplicative bus service, but a transfer requirement. So we just wanna make sure they, understand the importance of sticking to those, uh, frequencies that they're gonna promise. So, next slide. All right. And you, if you're a resident, you can provide individual feedback, uh, betterbus.womata.com. It's due in mid-July. Um, I know we are rescheduling Mount Rainier Day, um, so Womata was going to come out and have a booth there. They still plan to. Uh, and so there'll be great opportunity there at Mount Rainier Day, but, folks can also go on this website, check it out, plan out your own routes to see how the changes impact you. You know, we're gonna provide feedback as a council, mayor and council. But residents are not precluded or anyone else's businesses from providing their own direct feedback as well. So, uh, without, with that, that's it.
Thank you Jared. You know what I thought about, you were talking about it, um, I think it'll be helpful moving forward, Jared. You know how like you gave the summary of like what letter we sent and what was approved, uh, based on suggestions? If we could start incorporating that as part of our agenda, so that would come full circle, because I think that sometimes, um, it's not a clear, and why is it that we love you so much and why we're like in so many meetings, why we attend so many events, why we write so many letters? So I wanna make sure that, uh, we're also communicating to the community that, these things are important and this is a result of that happening. So I, I will task, uh, the various, uh, members here is to make sure that, um, we could do report backs. Um, so that we could come full circle in the things that, that we do and, and that will help. Okay. So thank you for that. Uh, council, any concern regarding, um, any feedback of the letter? Now I'm ready to move on. Thumbs up. We're good. All right. Let's move on. Luke? That was a hesitate. That is eight twenty-five Luke. Do not be hesitating on, you're like.
All right. I'll, I'll ask Jared a question offline. No worries.
All right. Perfect. Um, Jared, the sooner you can get the letter, because, um, the turnaround this, this, uh, between this meeting, the next is gonna be rather quickly. If council, have you noticed, um, mainly because we have a three day weekend and then, um, and as a point of information, as we move on this one, on Friday, the offices will close mainly two hours early?
Yes, Mayor, at three P M.
Okay. So be aware as we're working that and then Monday where, you know, the whole team is off as well. Um, so take that into account as we're submitting the documents, um, for that. So, the sooner you could get the letter ready, the better, so that we could, um, sign it and send it with enough time. Okay? And thank you for putting this early enough, so that way, um, that letter is gonna go early and, and mighty. Okay? All right. Perfect. And, uh, Melly, um, or Jared, can you please send a message to Mr. Kamali to, to, um, for the link that you said regarding the feedback, I think they might have already been doing it. If we could like, um, ask his team, to put that information out through our social media, so that what people want feedback. Uh, to give feedback, how do you call it? They also have a chance to do it. So that will, we help our residents. I know I posted in my social media, but also like if the city could put something together, in order to, um, as residents to get feedback, you know, including, thank you for the extensions and everything else. All right? Okay. Perfect. Moving on to, item number seven, presentation of minutes. The city clerk will present the following minutes to mayor and council, April sixteen, twenty twenty four. April twenty four, twenty twenty four, the budget legislative meeting, April seven, twenty twenty four, legislative meeting. All right. So you guys have it in your package. Thank you Melly. And if anybody else work on them, please extend our thank you to them as well. I, I am ridiculously happy that you guys know how much I love infrastructure, that this is where it needs to be. Like at this point, we're basically like, the in-between is like between the meetings that we have to like submit and approve, but other than that, they, they're doing a beautiful job of turning them around. So thank you for that. Um, item number eight, go ahead, um, Melly, pull it up. Um, is there any events that I need to do? Okay. So before we move on to item number eight, I wanna make sure we read the event. We have Pride Parade on June fifteenth. Uh, ten thirty A M. Any information, please reach out to the rec committee. Uh, Valerie is the liaison. Um, so reach out to them. And one more thing that wasn't added here, because we are sponsors, um, the Mount Rainier Elementary Carnival is May thirty, uh, Valerie, oh, thirty first.
May thirty first.
Friday, May thirty first is the point of information. Um, it's open to the whole entire community. We are sponsors of the city. They did apply for a grant for the recommission, uh, rec committee and it was awarded. So come out, have fun. There'll be plenty of people being dunked, you know, mayor and council, the kids have voted, so be ready to receive your invitations. All right? Mayor and council, the kids have voted, so be ready to receive your invitations. All right, I don't want no excuses. All right, so moving on to item number eight, motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved.
Whatever.
All right, so move, probably, it's probably moved. All right, any discussion, objection, extensions, hearing none? All right, this meeting comes to an end, okay?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, folks.
Have a good night. Guys, if you guys don't log out, the staff cannot leave. All right, Melly, shut them down. So you guys could go home. Bye.